Welcome everyone to the July fifteenth, twenty fourteen Shakopee City Council Meeting. Call the meeting to order. Ms. Weckman, could you please, please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Mayor Tabkey.
Here. All stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number three, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? Anything from staff?
Nothing from staff.
Anything from council? Entertainer motion to approve the agenda? Council Whiting.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
And I'll second.
Second by Council Mokel. Any discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number four, consent business. Anything to remove or add from consent this evening? Council Lehman.
Four F five removed.
Anything you want to add?
Um, I'll add D one, E two, and F one.
D one, E two, and F one to consent. Does anybody have a concern with that? All right, did you get that, Mr. McNeil?
I believe so.
Um, any others? All right. Entertainer motion, uh, to approve consent business? Council Lehman.
Motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
Aye.
Second by Council Mokel. Mr. McNeil, could you please read the consent business and welcome back, by the way?
Thank you. It's a thrill to be here. Consent items for tonight. Four B one, authorizes appropriate city staff to complete the two thousand fourteen Edward Byrne Memorial Grant application for funding of improvements at the police department. Four B two declares for, excuse me, three forfeited vehicles held by the police department to be surplus property and authorizes proper sale or disposal of these vehicles. Four C one, adopts resolution number seventy-four sixty-three, accepting work on the Upper Valley Drainage and Water Improvement Project. Four C two, authorize the appropriate city officials to execute an agreement for improvements to existing public road at-grade crossings on Valley Park Drive with the Union Pacific Railroad Company. Four C three approves the suspension of city code regarding noise elimination and noise prevention, specifically hourly restrictions on certain operations, allowing for construction work to go from five-thirty a.m. to ten p.m. on July twenty-third and July twenty-fourth on Eagle Creek Boulevard near the U.S. one-sixty-nine overpass. Four D one, adopts resolution seventy-four sixty-nine, amending the pay plan for part-time employees of the city Shakopee to add community event assistant. Four E one, adopts rules for us, excuse me, off-leash dog park within South Bridge Community Park. Four F one, authorizes payment of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of two million, five hundred forty-two thousand, ninety-five dollars and six cents. Uh, four F two approves minutes from the June twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen city council meeting. Four F three, adopts resolution seventy-four sixty-five, changing the August fourth city council meeting to August fifth, and the November fourth city council meeting to November fifth. Four F four, adopts resolution seventy-four sixty-six, appointing election judges for the August twelfth, two thousand fourteen primary and the August fourth, excuse me, November fourth, two thousand fourteen general election. Four F five was removed from consent agenda. Three items were added to consent agenda. Uh, ten D one, um, authorizes the city to offer early retirement incentives to qualifying employees. Uh, ten E two, um, authorizes the use of an intergovernmental grant given by the Shakopee and Wakan and Sioux community for the construction of a shelter at Huber Park. And ten F one, authorizes a feasibility study to take place with BKV Incorporated for an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. Anyone out there who has an item that is not on the agenda this evening that they'd like to discuss? Yes, sir. Name, address, as always?
My name is Jordan Olson, Mayor. I live at two four nine Mound Street. Um, I just wanted to take this opportunity to, um, express my concern, um, with the last, uh, city council meeting not being broadcast on TV when the two subjects of the meeting were sex offenders living in our city and the role of elected officials during a crisis. I'd like to let you know that if the people were to be able to watch you on TV, that you might not get so many angry phone calls as was discussed by our chief and our representative from the state. I just would like to, um, implore you to please not hold any more off-camera meetings.
Thank you very much. Make sure to sign in as well. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. Moving on to item number six, public hearing. Public hearing on the vacation of public drainage and utility easements at eleven oh nine Stagecoach Road. Uh, entertain a motion to open public hearing. Council Lehman.
Motion to open public hearing.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Council Mokel. Any discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Mr. Leek.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and members of the audience. This is a public hearing for a request regarding the vacation of an existing drainage and utility easement. At eleven oh nine Stagecoach Road, the applicant is Churney Contracting. As you know from the report, they have received approval for a conditional use permit to expand their existing building and their exterior storage area. A condition of that approval, however, is that they would need to vacate an existing easement. Their building addition would go over that easement, and that's not acceptable. They will have to relocate the utilities that are in that easement, provide a new drainage and utility easement, and retain all of the existing perimeter easements on that lot. And hopefully, you can see that. You can see their existing site. This is on the east end of Shakopee. Um, and the easement that's proposed for vacation is here. They propose to expand the building in this direction, exterior storage in this area. The Planning Commission did take up this, uh, matter and has recommended unanimously to you that you do vacate the easement under the conditions that are provided. And I would note for you that assurance that those conditions have been met will at the very latest be confirmed at the time they would come in for a building permit for that addition. So if the vacation has, or the easements, or the utilities have not been relocated, we don't have that easement. We would not issue a building permit at that time. So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Council Lehman.
Mayor, with all the rain we've got, I've got to ask where, which way the water flows on the site. Where's the stormwater runoff, um, easement going to be? And where does the water then go?
I'm not sure that I can answer that. I don't know if Mr. Looney has a better idea of the drainage out here.
Well, Mayor, members of the council, Council Lehman, um, they'll be coming up with the site plan.
Okay.
And they'll be doing grading and directing the water to the appropriate drainage ways. There's ditches along Stagecoach Road. And if they have to, um, I think they'll follow the natural drainage courses that are on the site now. That the water will go either into the MinDOT drainage system or in areas. There might be a culvert. I'm guessing there might be a culvert somewhere under the railroad tracks as well. There's existing drainage panels out there.
Okay. Mayor, will we get a, uh, drainage easement during the, uh, grading process? Will know that then?
Mayor, members of the council, Council Lehman, uh, none is needed unless it's for a public drainage. For their own drainage on their own site, no easement is necessary.
And there's nobody else around and they can flood?
That's correct.
Okay.
However, to pick up on what Mr. Looney said, at the time they make application for the building permit or a grading permit, if they decide to do that first, the drainage on that site would be reviewed to make sure it's flowing in the directions that Mr. Looney indicated.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions from council? All right. Seeing none. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak on behalf of this item this evening? Anyone? All right. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Council Lehman.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Whiting. Any discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Council Lehman.
Offer resolution seventy-four sixty-seven, approving in vacation of public drainage and utility easements. A lot, one block, one superior supply, first addition, move its adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Council Luce got in on that one. Any discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item seven, business removed from consent agenda discussed at this time. Item four F five was the only item removed. Temporary three-two percent, uh, malt liquor license for Shakopee J.C.'s. Council Lehman.
Mayor, council, I took this off the, uh, consent agenda to give the council an opportunity and the general public at home the opportunity to see, uh, change in designs for this year compared to past years. Um, I think it'd be a good opportunity for all of us to see what some of these changes are, um, and answer any questions that there might be. In your packet on the back, the picture that upper right-hand corner says no offense for the taste, which is the purple area, uh, that's inaccurate. So I thought we would take this off and point that out for you right away. And, uh, the J.C.'s are here along with the chair of the security for some of the gate locations on the map. And, uh, I would ask that they step forward and just give us a brief overview of what we're doing different this year so the public has a heads up and, uh, the council has a heads up.
Just, Mark, just put the, uh, map that's in our packet up on the board there.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Justin Harrison, uh, beer sales chair for the Shakopee J.C.'s.
Kyle Larkin, chair of, uh, security for Shakopee Derby Days.
So we're here for any questions that you guys may have.
Well, Mayor, if I may.
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, map that we've got on the screen is a lot different than what we've done in the past.
Mm-hmm.
You want to just go over exactly what's changing? This is what we call what an open area design.
That is correct, Councilman.
Beer will be able to be purchased and, uh, moved around within the gate, the area that's fenced, but not removed from the park.
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Then, advantage of that, disadvantage? I mean...
Advantage of this whole open area idea that we have is to better benefit the community in the fact that they can have a beverage, an adult beverage, go over, sit by the bandstand where their kids are at, enjoying the fireworks. Also, keeping them confined so that we don't have any spill-off into the public area, you know, people crossing the street over to Turtles, things like that. We give them a better space so we don't have the, the clutter or the crowdingness that we have had to deal with in the past with the beer garden and the high fences keeping everybody in. Especially with last year's venue of Johnny Home, the attendance almost succeeded immediately with something like that. This was something that was proposed to us by the Derby Days Committee, Jack McGovern, and the others to come up with a better idea. Speaking with our insurance providers through the Minnesota J.C., to which we get our insurance coverage for these kinds of events. This is going to be the most solid and tightest layout that we can get to not only let the community enjoy their time down at the Derby Days event, to walk around, food vendors, all that stuff, but also keep them contained so we don't have any other issues as far as public intoxication, things like that that do happen when people, you know, lose control a little bit.
There's been a couple other, uh, subtle changes. Uh, they did work with the police department. It's my understanding the police department is okay with this design. I've signed off on this design. Chief can correct me if we're wrong. Um, I did see the copy of the insurance, had it forward to, uh, Chris, acting city administrator in Mark's absence, so we're covered there. The, uh, couple of changes were their clear cups, I believe, and, uh, the wristbands are, are bright colored and different colors.
That is correct. We will, we will, um, in the years past, we have had the ticket booth where patrons would come up, purchase tickets, and then stand in line to purchase beer. Um, we're going to be doing away with that kind of, uh, restriction that we generally get when people are waiting in one line, moving to another. That'll eliminate an issue there, but we're also eliminating the pitchers as well. So what we want to do to save any hassle that may come up, when it does, you know, you're trying to recover a pitcher that are donated to us that we have to return, that we have to keep track of. Uh, clear cups are not an issue. We'll talk to our beer vendor. We'll see if we can go up a cup size or two so to give our community, you know, a little bit more flavor for what they're purchasing. And also multicolored neon wristbands that will change color from Thursday night to Friday night to Saturday night so that no one can go home, leave their wristband on, come in the next day, they can show their identification, get another wristband, and then they'll be covered at that point. That way it'll still be, and then from that point it'll be one beverage per identification.
And Mayor, last thing I guess I wanted to touch on was the, the key points that you see would be, uh, checkpoints where people can enter and exit. And the, I guess the issue working with the, uh, police and the security of Derby Days chair was not so much people coming in unless they're bringing a cooler or something like that, which isn't allowed for that event, but leaving later in the night with beers in their hands, which isn't allowed. So it's my understanding that these sites are going to be manned, um, by security folks from Derby Days or the J.C.'s. And, uh, the police will be able to roam freely and, and be backup for any issues that might pop up, but generally we're not expecting, you know, it's more of an educational. You can't, uh, leave the park with a open container from the event. Um, I think some of these are going to close later on in the night.
That, that is correct, sir. Yeah, the one that is more towards the left of the, where the kid stuff will be over here on the side, this gateway will be left open while the jump-in things are still going. When that time is expired, we can just put one of the movable barricades there.
Yep.
Either Mr. Larkin can have one of his personnel stand at that gate, or at that time I could probably spread out some of my quality control to just stand by that gate and go, you know, I'm sorry, you're going to have to come around the main entrance if you want to come in. I'm sorry, you can't go out with that beverage here. This is not a thoroughfare.
And I think the one directly behind the band, as I was talking with Kyle last night, was, uh, yeah, we're really not going to have a lot of folks coming in the backside. Um, it's pretty much going to be staff, but we're going to have, uh, some of the, the bands will come down the trail, unload, and might be able to go out that way or something, but that'll be gated off also, so. I think they've got a pretty workable plan here. Well, um, excited to see how it works out. Just wanted to be aware if there's any questions, and I see there's one, so.
Sorry. The other thing is all these, uh, access points are going to be wide enough for, you know, emergency vehicles or, you know, any, any vehicle that needs to get into the park.
So we're not, we're not blocking any thoroughfares. They're all movable barricades that will be at those, those sidewalk entrances, you know, emergency vehicles, the crew, golf carts, things like that. You get stuff moved in and out. Those will be movable, so there's not going to be any congestion in the case of an emergency situation. There are exits all over the place for people to go.
Council Whiting.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I want to thank you, Justin, and Kyle, and, uh, Mandy, uh, members of the J.C.'s. You guys have done a great job. As you know, I'm a member of the Derby Days Board, but, uh, I think you guys have taken a look at this, and I think visually with the orange fence around half of the stage, uh, area, this will be aesthetically a lot cleaner and nicer. Um, you know, I think it's more welcoming for people that come and visit the park during Derby Days. Uh, one question, um, well, a couple of questions. You had mentioned security at the gate, and you're going to man each gate with one or two people, uh, unless you close it, correct?
Correct.
And you, you'll have enough volunteers for that.
Uh, yeah, we are, um, yes, bringing in volunteers, um, and, and yeah, we're going to make sure that we have enough volunteers to have, you know, ideally two people per gate, um, and that would allow for kind of some, uh, I guess, looking over the park as well. If one of, one of the two people from the gate have to go in, you know, twenty, thirty feet or whatever to address an issue, um, that would allow for that. Instead of keeping just one person there, um, they'd have to stay right at that gate. So if we can double them up, there's a little bit of room for, for people to, you know, address issues closer to the...
No, I'm glad to see, uh, we're going to try this. It's, uh, going to be exciting. Uh, the other question is, uh, you're, you're going to have enough beer this year, right?
Yes, sir. There's not going to be any doubt about that. Uh, we'll get a spare trailer as, uh, we're putting in some plans for a backup trailer just in case. But yeah, we'll, we'll have, we're not have that issue like we did out last year.
Thank you so much for all that you do in the community.
Not a problem, Councilman. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, I've got one extra, other question, actually. Who's requiring the fence? Is that our requirement? Is that your insurance requirement?
I would refer to my wife, Mandy, also chair of, uh, Taste of Shakopee. She is also our insurance provider.
So many comments. Uh, Mandy Harrison with the Shakopee J.C.'s. Um, technically, if we were going to speak on behalf of the Minnesota J.C.'s, the fence is actually not required. However, because of liability purposes, and if we ever had to go to court for something, we want to make sure we do our due diligence in protecting the city and the Shakopee J.C.'s, so.
Got it.
Uh, and we do have enough fencing. We were able to actually go down and measure off everything, and between the fencing that surrounds our, uh, basement, storage facility, uh, we'll have enough fencing, and then the sponsorship that we're getting from Lowe's is also helping out, so.
Perfect. Thank you. Anybody else have questions at all? All right. So we need a motion for this item. Council Lehman.
I'll make a motion to approve the license for the temporary three-point-two malt liquor license for Shakopee J.C.'s and Derby Days.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Council Mokel. Any discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Move on to item number eight, recess for economic development authority meeting. Entertain a motion to recess for economic development?
So move.
Council Whiting, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Council Luce. Any discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. President Lehman.
Call a meeting in order. Please note the roll.
Yes, Mr. President.
Everybody should have an agenda and the information in front of you, so a motion to approve the agenda would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Mrs. Mokel, seconded by Mr. Whiting. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Consent, consent business. EDA bill list, EDA minutes. Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the EDA bill list and minutes on consent.
Your second. Motion by Whiting, seconded by Luce. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to our last item, which is number five.
I make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty fourteen, at seven p.m.
And I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Tabkey, seconded by Ms. Mokel. To adjourn any discussion, hearing none. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, and a new record has been set.
Well done. All right. We reconvene the Shakopee City Council meeting, and we move on to item number ten. B one, discussion of unmanned aircraft system regulation.
Ten A one.
Oh, I'm sorry, ten A one. Sorry about that. Uh, Valley Fair Appeal of Planning Commission Resolution approving a planned unit development amendment regarding site signage, resolution number seventy-four sixty-eight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and members of the audience, as you noted, um, this is an appeal of a decision by the Planning Commission. Valley Fair made application for an amendment to their PUD to do two things. One was to increase the size of their main sign on, on Highway one oh one. The second was to include in that signage animation, dynamic animation, um, video, and so on. Uh, it was an application whose review period was extended by letter to a hundred and twenty days. Um, the initial public hearing was scheduled for the Planning Commission in May, and at the request of the applicant, we continued that till June. In June, the Planning Commission reviewed it and did approve a PUD amendment as to the sign size, but after their discussion concluded they wanted to stay with the electronic sign change duration that had been established not that long ago in the zoning code. Um, you may remember the Holiday Station, uh, application for text amendment, I believe, in two thousand twelve that resulted in a new ordinance. They have appealed that portion of the action which denied, uh, the request for an increase or decrease in the duration of changes of their image. You'll note in the application for appeal that they are now proposing an eight-second time change, not necessarily the dynamic animation that was talked about at the Planning Commission. Couple of things, uh, for those who don't know, in our zoning ordinance, if an amendment to a PUD involves less than ten percent of that PUD and its site, the Planning Commission has authority to make a decision. That's what happened here. They're appealing that decision of the Planning Commission. Uh, you, of course, have discretion if, after hearing from the applicant, you wish to allow a reduced duration of changeability in their signs to do that. Given the timeframe for making a decision, what I would suggest if you do that is that you direct staff to prepare a resolution approving the appeal on behalf of the applicant for action on your consent agenda at your Janu-, or July twenty-second meeting. What we've prepared for this evening is a resolution upholding the Planning Commission's action. So if you wish to uphold the appeal rather than the Planning Commission, direct us to bring a resolution back next week. If you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Council Lehman.
Mayor, I've got two questions. The first one is, uh, when we changed the text in twenty twelve, what, uh, duration did we put into it?
One minute.
Okay. And then the second question is, uh, did I read this right by, um, and I'll throw a hypothetical out. If, if, if they went to a one-minute time in, in their new sign, did I read this to say that they would have to remove their directional signage?
No.
Okay.
That would not be correct.
Okay. If that was the case, I was against that, but maybe I read it wrong. Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Leek before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
My name is, uh, Dave Fraser, general manager of Valley Fair. Mr. Mayor, council members. Um, as we've gone through this process, you know, we appreciate everybody's efforts with the sign size and, uh, proving that. Um, we looked at the video and, and everyone discussed it, looked at federal regulations, and everyone agreed that, you know, video and, uh, the commercials that we put out there at first are not approved. Um, as we looked at future studies, and I think they're in the packet, um, there's one by the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration memo dated September twenty-fifth, two thousand and seven. Uh, this memo identifies ranges acceptable duration of messages between four and ten seconds. Eight seconds is recommended. Uh, Minnesota Department of Transportation has a memo indicates six seconds between displays along a fifty-five mile an hour highway is allowed. And then the U.S. Department of Transportation, also in a study, states that, um, these signs do not provide more distraction than a standard billboard. Um, so with that information, we're just looking at being able to change the image on our, our new sign when we do get one every eight seconds.
Questions for Mr. Fraser? Council Lehman?
Is there any, do you have anything to show of this sign, how it's functioning at eight compared to what it would look like at one minute?
I, I do not have any. I do. I mean, I, um, I live in Apple Valley. If I look at the signs on Cedar Avenue on thirty-five W heading north, every once in a while when I'm stuck on construction on thirteen, I, I can look over and see, you know, those signs all change at eight seconds. Um, it's just a matter of the number of messages that you're able to portray to people coming by.
Mr. Leek.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. For those of you who are familiar with them, there are a number of electronic signs in the city. Um, initially, some of them you may have noticed change... Initially, some of them you may have noticed changed more frequently. They were between five and 10 seconds. Basically, along 101 and Marshall Road is where they were located. So if you saw those changes, that's approximately what the duration would be like for what they're proposing for their entrance sign. Those signs have been adjusted so that they do currently meet the one-minute change.
Does anyone have questions? All right. Council Wyding?
I have a question for staff. We have talked about the sign ordinance, and I know it's been bounced around and discussed. I believe, Angie, you guys have taken a look at it at the chamber, maybe through your public policy board. What is the timeframe for seeing that back here?
Councilor Wyding, members of the council, I'm not sure I can give you a specific timeframe, but you should know that today we had a meeting with Ms. Whitcomb and members of the Public Policy Committee. They've reviewed it. They have now proposed an entirely different approach to the sign ordinance than is encompassed in the existing regulations. So we'll have to take a look at that and see how that would be put together, how we would process that with the input of the EDAC and the Planning Commission as we did the draft that was under review by the chamber for the last several months. So I don't have a specific timeframe for you. It does not, per se, address this situation. I think it's fair to say at the Planning Commission, I did note for the commission that this was a PUD, and they have authority to do other than the code requires in a PUD. As I said, they chose not to based on the relative newness of the ordinance, but that will always be available within a commercial PUD to make that kind of request.
My, if I may continue, my concern is that we've been kicking the sign ordinance around for quite a while, and I think for too long. And I would like to see that wrapped up. I don't, I'm not sure how we get that done. I know you guys have done a ton of work on it, and, and I know it's back, I guess it's back in our court now. So that's my concern, and I would like to see this part of it move along. And maybe this would incorporate some of these concerns, but I don't think it's timely enough for what Valley Fair is looking for.
Yeah, I think we absolutely need to make a decision based on this, what's in front of us today as opposed to the entire sign ordinance itself. Councilman Lehman?
Well, I'm not willing to carve out an exception for one business, but I totally agree with Councilor Wyding, and I would go so far as to say maybe we need to discuss a, a separate workshop with the staff and chamber just on the sign ordinance update and, and try to move it forward and get it done. It's been, it's been a long time in the making, and I, I agree with you.
Members of the council, I will say at the risk of putting my foot in my mouth that I was serious when I suggested they proposed an entirely different approach, which was characterized as doing away with what we had been working with the Planning Commission and EDAC on. So I'm not sure that a workshop in the near future is going to address getting it done because we're taking a look at an entirely different approach. And while I'm confident that I have enough skill to draft an ordinance in a week, if you want me to do that, I don't have the confidence to say that everyone's gonna buy into that first draft. That was the issue with the process that we went through. We went through several months of joint meetings with the EDAC and the Planning Commission to get to the draft we had. We are now talking about putting that draft aside and taking an entirely different approach.
Thank you. Well, for now, let's focus on what's in front of us and not the entire sign ordinance as it were. Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, I'm not placing blame anywhere. I'm just strictly pointing out that if the chamber maybe has taken a different approach, the council may also have now taken a different approach that staff may not be aware of, and council as a body may not be aware of because we really haven't had a discussion amongst ourselves. And instead of having staff working on a different approach that, as you stated, you don't know exactly where council is going, maybe we, we as a body should find out where we want to go and make sure that we're all on the same page.
I don't disagree with that at all, but let's address that next. Let's address what's in front of us now and, and figure out what to do with this. I, myself, I have zero issue whatsoever going to eight seconds. I thought that we had, for some reason, I thought that when we, this had come before us in 2012 that we had reduced it to somewhere along there, but as we look back, it was evidently wrong. I can't remember why we made that decision as a council to have it at one minute. But I thought we had, we had changed it to eight seconds back in 2012, myself, so I have no concern with this. Councilor Mokel?
I have no problem changing this to eight seconds. I think that we should grant the appeal.
Council Wyding?
The only question I have is, is if we agree for eight seconds in this planned unit development, where's it gonna go next? Is everybody gonna want to have their changing sign? I mean, I think maybe we need to be more specific and specifically point out that we want to allow it for maybe just the major recreation zoning. Is that something we can do?
Well, we have to, we have to deal with the, the PUD amendment that's here, and then, once we, we handle this, however we vote on handling it, then let's have a quick discussion after we get this handled as to what we want to do and see in the future sign ordinance. Is that fair, everyone? So is there a motion that's going to be on the floor? Councilman Lehman?
Well, I'll make a motion to uphold the denial of the Planning Commission, and then I'd like to speak to why I'm taking my position and where I see us going.
Okay, does anyone have a second? Anyone a second?
I'll second that to hear his, his, his position on it.
Senator, Council Wyding? Councilman Lehman?
Well, where I'm going is I would rather see us denied and uphold the Planning Commission and look at the sign ordinance, have a text amendment at some point, and it may take three months or so, and the changes might allow Valley Fair and others to flip the time back, and it's, and it's fixed. Maybe the time we come up with is 10 seconds or something, but instead of having a hodgepodge, as you're pointing out, it would require us to address the text amendment that it's out there, and everybody can make their changes, and it's consistent.
Council Wyding?
I tend to agree with you. I, I think, you know, if we start patching it like that, then, then the other guy's gonna say, well, now I want this, and they'll be coming before us. And I think the best way to do it and the cleanest way to do it is to tag it through the sign ordinance or sign ordinance text amendment.
With, with that being said, I don't disagree with you at all on that, but this is different.
I disagree on doing it for this business right now who needs a new sign.
Right.
And now you're folding up what may be costing them more money because the sign is failing as it is. I, I don't think that that's cost effective for the business that needs the sign now.
As well, this is a PUD which carves out special, PUDs are there intended to carve out special needs for different entities, and so that's what the PUD is, is for. And so I think this fits in perfectly with that, that process. So that's just my thought on that. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Fails one to four with Councilor Wyding, Luce, Mokel, and myself in dissent. Is there another motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to grant the appeal of Valley Fair approving a planned unit development or creating the, I don't know exactly the wording.
Members of the council, maybe I can suggest that the motion would be to uphold the appeal of Valley Fair and direct staff to prepare a resolution allowing the amendment of their PUD to allow an eight-second interval for the sign as a part of their PUD for action on consent at the July 22nd meeting.
I like that.
I'll take that.
Councilor Mokel, you accept that? Is there a second?
I accept that.
I'll second it.
Senator, Councilor Luce, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Consistency, aye.
Passes four to one with Councilman Lehman in dissent. All right. Thank you very much for being here, Mr. Fraser, Mr. Whitcomb. Now, let's just talk briefly about sign ordinance in general. Is it council wishes to have sometime late, I'd say late summer, early fall, workshop discussion, 20 minutes, half hour of where this is all going? Is that, okay, we will get that on the agenda. All right. Item number, yes, sir?
We're, we're gonna talk a little further, and we'll bring it back to you. I think what, we would probably want to make sure that you're in agreement with the concept that they're bringing, which basically eliminates a lot of the maximums, and see that you're in agreement with that concept before we put a lot of work into it. If you are, then we'll certainly do that and bring it back according to your schedule.
We had a lot of head nods for coming for a workshop to discuss it before it gets too far.
And Mayor, members of the council, I might suggest, and this is something we did talk about at the meeting today, that we will bring the general concept to the EDAC and the Planning Commission, perhaps collect their comments, and then bring it forward for you to discuss the general concepts, see where you are in connection with them. I could outline them today, but you have other items to do, so let's do it that way.
And I don't see this as needing to be an entire evening of workshop. This is 20 minutes, half hour of making sure that we're giving it our blessing of moving forward or not that way. Council Wyding?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we've kicked this around. I know Mr. Leake is a professional on the sign ordinance, but it's probably not something he does 40 hours a week, and I know the chamber is not a group that wants to take on the sign ordinance any more than it has to. My question for the group is, is this something that maybe we want to look at, a professional consultant to take a look and, and help develop this?
Have you seen the changes that the chamber has come forward?
No, I have not seen it.
I have, and I think they, it did an excellent job, and I think you'll be pleased with it.
I'd say let's talk about that at the workshop when we come.
Okay.
Everyone on board with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, 10B1, discussion of unmanned aircraft system regulation. Chief Tate?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We are asking council to consider tonight whether to wait for the FAA to address the issue of unmanned aircraft systems, commonly referred to as drones, or to move forward with an independent ordinance. You had directed staff recently to examine ordinances and regulations surrounding the use of drones or the unmanned aircraft systems, which is the term the FAA uses, and then report back to you. Staff has consulted with the city attorney, I've also spoken with the county attorney, Scott County Attorney, to determine whether the city has the authority to adopt an ordinance similar to what St. Boniface did, which limits the use or operation of drones in their city's airspace. This type of regulation raises numerous constitutional and common law issues. By federal law, the FAA is charged with U.S. airspace safety. Generally, this authority preempts any state or local government from airspace regulation. Courts have made it clear that local regulation of airspace safety is preempted by the FAA. Local governments retain some authority to limit these devices in their own departments, typically police and engineering is where you would see that. But based on the legal opinion that we received, the city probably does not have the valid authority to limit or ban drones used by other private or public entities. St. Boniface is the only city we found in the state with an ordinance, and there are many questions as to whether or not that's even enforceable. And one would also wonder how much, from an expense standpoint, they would spend fighting such a case. Civilian use of these is on the rise, particularly in the agricultural and real estate market. I understand the concern and the frustration. We've had a handful of complaints involving one individual in the city who was flying his craft over homes in the city. We did speak with him, and since then, we have not had any, any more complaints in the, regarding that individual or drones in general. There are multiple cases in the court system right now. However, they have not been resolved, and because this issue remains murky at best, Congress has directed the FAA to come up with a framework to integrate and regulate drones into the national airspace with a completion due date, excuse me, completion due date in 2015. You may also have seen recently, in the last couple of weeks in the news, they did ban drones in all national parks. The legitimacy of any local regulation will most likely hinge on the upcoming federal regulations. Therefore, staff recommends that council wait for the FAA to address the issue before moving forward with an ordinance of our own. Should no federal regulations be adopted in early 2015, the city could revisit the subject sometime next year. I'd like to make a few points because most of the articles that I read nationwide talked about controlling law enforcement's use of the drones, specifically citing Fourth Amendment concerns. We do not have a drone, and we are not budgeting for a drone. With respect to privacy rights, we are deeply concerned with privacy rights. I absolutely understand how unfettered use of drones could infringe on someone's rights. And if anyone believes that one of these objects, drones, is viewing their family or themselves and penetrating the, the house in terms of looking in a window, they should absolutely call us. I believe that is surreptitious intrusion. We have a statute on the books for that, and that is a misdemeanor. However, if someone's flying over your house and capturing you out in your yard, I do believe they are okay. Their examples would be Google Earth and your local television news helicopters that fly over residences all the time capturing video, oftentimes real-time streaming that over the airways. I would love nothing better than to have some of those news helicopters move away from some of our sites and some of our crime scenes sometimes. However, they can be there. And the only way to get them, to move back is if we get the State Patrol helicopter to come in, and usually then they, they give us a little space, but they get the shots with their cameras. So, be happy to take any questions.
Councilman Lehman?
Well, we find ourselves in a catch-22. We're guilty either way. If we do nothing, we're violating people's Fourth and Tenth Amendment. If we do something, we're waiting on the federal government, who takes five years to pass a budget. So either way, we're in a catch-22, and we're screwed. And unfortunately, the people that are screwed are the citizens that we represent. So I still say that we can't wait. I mean, there, there's, it's just, the technology now is unbelievable. At 100 feet, they can look straight down into your windows and see what you're doing and read what you're eating on your couch if your curtains are open. It's unfortunately happening. Doing nothing, we're going to basically have drone wars because now we're telling everybody that receives a copy of this meeting that there's nothing anybody can do about it, go out and do it, you know, short of bringing her down to 20 feet and standing right outside the window, which even if you call the cops, by the time they get there, there's gonna be no evidence except for when they find it on YouTube, which is too late. So we're in a catch-22. We'll probably get sued one way or the other. So, do you get sued by somebody for trying to protect somebody, or do you get sued for, by somebody for not protecting them?
Any other comments? Anyone have a motion on the object, on the item? Any of them have questions for Chief Tate? Councilman Lehman?
I'll direct staff to draft an ordinance somewhat like St. Boniface. They haven't been challenged, and it, it doesn't infringe upon the Fourth Amendment right of police to utilize a drone with proper probable cause or search warrants, them types of things, so I think they took an active role in it, and I, I support that policy.
Could you restate what your motion is?
My motion would be to direct staff to come up with a, a policy somewhat like St. Boniface did.
All right. Is there a second to that? Is there a second? All right, motion dies for lack of a second. Any other motions? All right. Thank you, Chief Tate.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item 10E1, implementation of a dog park pass program for the dog park within Southbridge Community Park. Ms. Polly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a little bit less deep of a topic than the last couple, so hopefully we can get a pass discussed for the Southbridge Community Park Dog Park. On February, or what we're asking for council tonight was to approve your, for you to approve the recommendation of the Parks Recreation Advisory Board for the city to sell a dog park pass and to make a recommendation to staff to send a proposal to Three Rivers Park District if you still feel that we want to partner with them in a dog park pass for the annual pass, for our dog park. So this is something you have seen before. On February 18th, the concept of partnering with Three Rivers Park District came before the city council to see if you supported that partnership and moving forward and asking staff to negotiate a partnership. You did make that motion at that time. We went back to Three Rivers Park District. When we came to in February, the concept was that if we did partner with Three Rivers Park District on the annual pass, we would have the ability, our residents that bought an annual pass would have the ability to use not only our dog park, but all, all the Three Rivers dog parks within the area or within the whole state, I guess, is mainly around. mainly around the metro areas where the dog parks are. Um, the pass would be a Three Rivers Park District pass. It's a thirty-five dollar pass for the initial dog. It's a seventeen fifty uh, for any additional dog in that family from then on. We would, at the, the original proposal was that we would get fifty percent of any of those dog park passes that we sold at our community center. And then we would get a hundred percent of the daily passes that someone would buy through an automated system that we would install at the dog park. Uh, one of the items that council has directed, had directed staff to look into was whether or not Three Rivers Park District could track the residents' usage of, of annual passes from our zip code of five-five-three-seven-nine. They are able to do that. Uh, they were able to pull that two hundred and four passes were sold in two hundred, in two thousand and thirteen. And to date, a hundred and sixty-four passes have been sold in two thousand and fourteen. Um, so they do have that ability to do that. Um, so going back, uh, when I was directed to renegotiate with Three Rivers Park District, what they came back with, was that because we would have the ability to get any passes and they can, but people can buy their passes online. That's the majority of their sales. Right now, we don't have the ability to buy passes at any of their automated systems in the park. There is the ability to do it, but it's a, a large software upgrade. Um, so right now, online, if we were to, if they were to give us a cut of all five-five-three-seven-nine annual passes sold, they would be willing to give us twenty-five percent. And then the city would still retain a hundred percent of the daily fees that we get from the automated system at the dog park. One of the other directions from council at that February meeting was to bring back the idea of a standalone pass that a, for a city of shock could be dog park pass only. That would be good only for our dog park. Um, three, the park board did discuss both of these options at length at their July meeting. And, um, they did like the idea of both passes. They are recommending to the city council that we do partner with Three Rivers Park District or we present the proposal to partner with Three Rivers Park District based on that, um, hundred percent of the daily fee and twenty-five percent of the zip code. But they also felt that we should sell our own annual pass permit. That we could sell along with, here at City Hall, at the community center, we could do that online as well through our registration software. Um, but it would be something they can purchase when they purchase their dog license. Um, on the rules that were approved earlier, one of the rules in that, um, document was that you have to have a dog license or an annual permit to use the dog park. Um, so we do have an ordinance in the city as well that your dog has to be licensed. Right now, our current license is twenty-four dollars for two years, but it's prorated based on the month you buy it. And, um, this is something that staff has been wanting to look at for some time. That was also discussed by the park board. Um, they are recommending, or they will be recommending to the city council, a change in the dog park license fee. Um, that would be fifteen dollars per year. And you, people can choose to buy up to three years worth based on their vaccination um, end date. So the city of St. Louis Park does this. And I can bring up their website if you're interested. Um, but, uh, rabies vaccine, vaccine, which is required to have when you use the dog park, is good for three years. So, like I just got my dog's rabies vaccination last week. I could come and purchase a dog license and I could purchase three years out because my rabies is good for that three years. I don't have to come back every year to renew that license. Um, you have to show proof of that vaccination when you get your dog license. So we would know that you can buy no more than what that vaccination is worth. That will come forward to the city council as a fee schedule amendment at a future meeting. But I wanted to bring it up that you could talk about now. If that's something you don't agree with, we can make those changes. So with that, then when someone buys a dog license, they would get, they could buy their city pass for ten dollars apiece. Um, that's what the park board is recommending. It's a minimal fee for the dog park pass, um, but it is in addition to the dog license. So that's the recommendation from the park board. However, in my memo, I did lay out the different options that you have. So that's one option. The other option that you can decide is that we go with just a city pass. We don't partner with Three Rivers Park District. Um, so taking the city of St. Louis Park, for instance, um, similar with the city of Edina, they sell a, with their dog license, um, they require a dog license to, to, you have to have a city dog license to use that park. And in that dog license fee, you get the use of the dog park. There's no additional fee for an annual pass. Therefore, they don't have the Luke system or an automated pay system. They don't have daily fees. Um, you have to have a license. That's how it's regulated. Um, but then their dog license is twenty, twenty or twenty-five dollars depending upon the city that you're looking at. Um, so they raised the annual fee and that's per year, but it includes the use of that park as well. So that's one option. Um, and we could sell those, like I said, on our, online. And the other, the third option is to not have a city pass and just go with the partnership of Three Rivers Park District, having it be more or less a Three Rivers Park District dog park like all the rest of them, but it would be run by the city. And we would still, we would, it would still be though that twenty-five percent and the hundred percent of the daily admissions.
Thank you. Questions? Councilor Lehman?
I'm actually good with what's in front of me, except I'm wondering how we're gonna enforce it.
How, how the police would enforce it?
Well, how would anybody enforce it? I mean, does, is there a gate that you actually pay and then the gate unlocks? Or if you don't wanna pay, you just walk in?
It's a, it's a honor. Most dog parks are on the honor system. Um, it's people that are in there that regulate themselves. But also I have talked with our police chief. Uh, we do have a police officer that has a South Bridge area as part of their responsibility. They would take on the enforcement of the dog park, but they, it would be more of a random check. So they would go and do the checks. They'd check people. If you don't have your license, you know, then they could enforce it that time. They won't be there all the time. It won't be something that's staffed. Um, it would be more of a random system.
Is there, Mayor, if I may, is there a penalty, if the police walk into the dog park, somebody's in there, they don't have a pass, is there a penalty for that? Do they get a citation?
Potentially. I don't know, I don't believe a citation is set up yet. I don't know how the police department sets that up. That would be something I would talk with the police chief about. Um, I would say most likely they would first get a warning or ask to leave and make sure they come back with their pass. Sometimes at dog parks, you have to provide that you've proof to the police department that you've bought your pass within so many hours or you'd get a citation. So as far as that goes, I'd have to talk with the police chief, but, um, he seems to think that they can enforce something.
A citation that costs more than the, uh, entrance fee would be encouragement to buy the entrance fee.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I have one on this. How much, um, how much do you anticipate coming in per year?
Okay.
Revenues from the annual and daily passes?
Well, based on the number, if we do the partnership with Three Rivers Park District, um, they have, and I did put it in the memo, uh, I can put it up on here as well. Um, so the annual, the initial cost of that Luke system, the automated pay system that we would put at the park, um, is eighteen thousand dollars. There are other options for potentially taking daily fees. We could put in a, you know, a steel tube that people can drop their payment in. Have to be collected on a regular basis. And they fill out a little envelope. We could go that route. This is a more efficient, everything's paid online. It can actually be connected to either our city system or Three Rivers Park District. And then we would have the agreement that they would cut us the check. Um, but either way, the initial cost is eighteen thousand dollars. The estimate, the, the estimate that we got from twenty thirteen from Spring Lake Dog Park, which is right off of eighty-two, um, what they made twenty-four thousand, or it's twenty-four thousand, I'm sorry, twenty-four hundred dollars in revenue. And that was after the expenses were taken out for the annual fees for the Luke system, um, and that sort of thing. So, we can guesstimate around two thousand, I believe, based on those numbers. And then also if we take the two hundred and four passes that Three Rivers Park District sold to residents of five-five-three-seven-nine in twenty thirteen, um, times their thirty-five dollar fee, that is their annual fee, twenty-five percent of that, um, is about eighteen hundred dollars. So roughly, we can anticipate just from that partnership, close to four thousand dollars if our numbers are similar to what two thousand and thirteen brought in.
Sorry, I misunderstood when I was reading that earlier. Um, I didn't realize that was what you were projecting. So the forty-two hundred per year is what you're projecting?
Yep. So that would be about a five-year payback for that Luke system.
All right. And that Luke system will last how long?
About fifteen years is what I've been told.
Okay. Councilor Lehman?
Does it have the technology in that system to be able to tie into our own system and the, uh, the other one?
I, I can check that. I think that, you know, what it does now, and Ms. Lynn Hand might be able to speak through it a little bit more, but, um, it ties in, it's a, it's a phone line or a fiber network that can tie in directly to our credit card merchant that we go through. Um, I don't know if it can do three rivers at the same time. I think we would track those numbers then and we would get that revenue if we tied it into our system.
Council Whiting?
So you had mentioned, uh, the Luke system, eighteen thousand dollars. You also mentioned that there's fees that go along with it, I'm sure, for software licensing. So that twenty-four hundred dollars is after you've paid your fees on the licensing?
Yes, the twenty-four, four hundred dollars was the amount that we figured out after we took out all those fees. There's about a hundred and seventy-five dollar annual fee. They made, um, I have it all in this folder, but I, I believe they made thirty-one hundred dollars um, total. And then after the expenses, is twenty-four hundred is what we came up with based on the numbers they gave us, so.
I may have one more. Um, so five-year payback is pretty good. Are you, is the, is the dog park planning group planning any other kind of fundraisers or any kind of events that go along with, uh, um, the opening of the park that might generate any more funds to help alleviate the cost?
We have discussed it at our dog park meetings, but nothing's been coordinated or, um, talked about further at this time. Um, but I believe that we could get our dog park group to, to do some events. Um, but yes, nothing's been planned at this time.
All right, do you have a motion? Council Whiting?
Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the recommendation of the Park and Rec Advisory Board to sell the city of shock at the dog park pass and submit a proposal to Three Rivers Park District to partner on their dog park pass, uh, their annual dog park pass where the city would retain a hundred percent of the daily fees and twenty-five percent of the annual pass fees sold to the residents of zip code five-five-three-seven-nine.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Same by Councilor Mokel. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If Three Rivers Park District does not accept the proposal, we'll be back to discuss how we go forward.
Perfect. Thank you, Jamie. All right, uh, we're gonna move on to item number eleven. Any other business for this evening? From council? All right, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to enter into. Sorry, yep. I wasn't gonna adjourn. I was gonna go to closed session. Just kick everybody out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm just giving you an update right now on an action. And this is more for, for public knowledge. But I thought the council should be aware of it as well. It's an action of the Scott County Board, uh, meeting from this morning that they took. Um, here at the city, we've been getting a lot of questions on the slow no wake regulations on Lake O'Dowd. So the county board does, did have a restriction. Right now, the city also has a thirty-day restriction on the slow no wake on that lake. Our, um, the, the resolution that we put forward as well as, or the directive that the city as well as Louisville Township put forward has a thirty-day expiration date, which is Sunday, where our restrictions come off, the county then takes over and supersedes any other restrictions that they put on. Uh, right now, the current mark prior to this morning for the slow no wake to come off was the ordinary high water mark, um, which is, uh, nine forty-five point two. The lake typically, we went out there last week, the county, uh, representative of the county and myself went and looked at everything. It was still above that and we didn't see any erosion controls. However, the lake went up this last week. But the county took an action this morning that has the slow no wake restriction still on the lake, but they raised that, that mark where it will be taken off. So they raised it from nine forty-five point two to nine forty-five point eight. I re, I believe right now we're point five over that. Um, so with some warm days and evaporations. But from here on out, then the county will take that regulation off and will let us know when it is taken off. But they did change that elevation mark.
So does it automatically come off when it, when it lowers past that point eight?
Correct.
So it automatically comes off and no action will need to be taken?
Right, no action will need to be taken, yeah. At a further meeting, the county may put together a general ordinance that at a future rain, you know, event, we don't have to do the last minute slow no wake items that the county and the city and the township did, um, similar to what Prior Lake has. But that's something that the county will bring forward at this time. Right now, this is just for this event. Um, and this is the mark that will take it off.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions? Councilor Lehman?
Do you know if they plan, have any plans on how to notify people in a future event? If it's gonna be an automatic, uh, policy that a no wakes situation happens at a certain water level? How people are gonna be aware of that?
Well, if they put that forward, it would be an ordinance that the county would draft. So I believe it would go through that whole process of the public meetings and the public notification. Um, I do also know that, uh, when I talked to, to, uh, Mr. Nelson, who oversees this from the county, before the county would bring forward that, they would talk with the lake association and get, they need to have so many members on the lake be a, up in, um, support of, of whatever regulations they're gonna bring forward to the county. Um, a year, a couple of years back, they did have people with the same concerns. And they were told they had to get, I believe, sixty percent of the people on the lake to say, yes, we want the slow no wake to put on if it reaches this. And they couldn't get that. So it never has moved forward. So there'd be a lot of public input first.
Mayor, I'm thinking common sense wise. Usually I come up to an intersection and then there's a stop sign that tells me to stop here. Um, and if there's not, I just keep going. So I'm thinking that when you get to the lake access, if there's like a water level thing and it says when it gets to this point, it's a no wake point, then people know.
We put out signs.
Yes.
They, they put out signs?
They do put out signs, too.
Anytime the slow no wake zone is enforced, it's, signs go out.
And the sheriff's office is who enforces this on the lake. Just wanted to give you an update.
Thank you very much. Any other business? All right, uh, entertain a motion entering the closed session to consider acquisition of MinDOT property by, uh, County Road sixty-nine and Veering Drive. Council Whiting?
Make a motion to go into closed session?
Do you have a second? Same by Councilor Luce. Any discussion? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this meeting is being closed for certain Minnesota statute, section thirteen D point oh five subdivision B three. And that's to develop or consider offers or counter offers for the purchase or sale of real or personal property.
Thank you.
What I meant to say.
Very, very much. We appreciate that. Uh, and then Councilor Luce, you're okay with that amendment?
Yes.
To the motion? All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. We are now in closed session.